Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, April 1st, 2021, and just after 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. I would ask you to please remain muted until the chairperson yields the floor to you. I hear several people talking right now, so again, please mute yourselves to mitigate that outside sound. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the April 1st, 2021, public meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. This is a public hearing. It's continued for Rhino Capital Advisors LLC at the site of 43 Main Street. The applicant has filed for a site plan review and a special permit under 6.7, 7.4, and 7.9 of Lakeville zoning in regards to the redevelopment of the former Lakeville Hospital's site. This meeting will include a review and request for a special permit. So at this time, I'd like to go through some submittals that we received over the past two-plus weeks. We've had some Abutter correspondence. Joe Ellen Kenny of 10 Bridge Street on March 12th, 2021, has submitted a letter to the Planning Board. Mary F. and Gerard J. Roach of 20 Forest Park Drive submitted a letter to the Planning Board on March 18th, 2021. Martha Schroeder of Three River Bend submitted a letter to the Planning Board on March 13th, 2021. Anne Marie Sherrick of One Sterling Court submitted a letter to the Planning Board on March 19th, 2021. And Tony Cупи of 18 Vaughan Street has submitted a letter to the Planning Board on March 19th, 2021. Most of those letters were in opposition or questioned some of the processes that have gone on in the public hearings. For the correspondence, we've had three submittals from Richard Scott of Rush Pond Road, one on March 9th, 2021, which is titled Peer Review of Public Documents. Richard Scott submitted another letter titled 43D/Development Opportunities District Public Hearing, titled, I'm sorry, dated March 19th, 2021. And Mr. Scott also submitted on March 23rd, 2021, peer review of noise for the Rhino project. I'm going to stop there because after that it goes into town documents or state documents. So I'd like to take an opportunity to briefly address some of those. One in particular, Mr. Scott. In one of your letters, you have made the reference, you feel that the Planning Board isn't specifically responding to all your comments. I can tell you that we're not going to do that to every comment that you make, but I will say that I directly went to the peer review engineer that's handling the project for the town and addressed this matter about your submittals specifically to say, Scott, are we listening to Mr. Scott? And his response, basically, I'm paraphrasing, was if we reviewed all of his documents, all of the proposed conditions that the Planning Board has put forth, basically, answer or speak to all of his concerns. So, you know, I want to make that point clear that in everybody, we have read everybody's letters. They do matter to us, and I will give everybody a chance to speak tonight briefly. And I understand after last, two weeks ago's meeting, it was a little after-party. And that's fine, but if anything happens, it sounds like that, I'm going to shut it right down. Everything needs to be cordial and of decent meeting conduct. So that said, I'm going to continue through documents. Edward Cullen, the Board of Health agent, submitted a letter regarding the process that the Board of Health would be enabled to act on any noise complaints from Abutters regarding this project. DEP has EENF review, which is a lengthy document regarding its follow-up to the original expanded environmental form that was, I think, put in in the January or early February hearings that DEP has reviewed. And again, I think this is a duplicate, but we have a letter from Matthew J. Costa, which is from the offices of Attorneys Gay and Gay, which is a statement of opposition of zoning use, which was discussed at the last hearing. So again, I think that's a duplicate, but nonetheless, it's in here. I believe that was actually posted to the town's website. Beyond that, there were two submittals given. One, I assume, and I don't, well, I don't want to assume, but it's called Risky Business, and it's about the town of Medfield demolishing a hospital. And can the state be trusted to take something down unwatched? And then Ground Field Redevelopment Toolbox, which, Ground Fields, my understanding is there, it's an organization that helps to fund cleanup of municipal properties that are blighted, which I don't think that that would necessarily apply to this because it's not a municipal property, but did read through it, probably all the other Planning Board members did as well. So at this point, I'd like to ask any Planning Board members if they'd like to make any comments. Peter?
Yes, Mark, how you doing tonight?
Good, thanks.
I did prepare something that I've thought about for several weeks now, so if now's a good time, I just soon read it now, then wait till the end, so.
Go right ahead.
Basically, if you don't know me, I've lived in Lakeville for 20 years, in my eighth year on the Planning Board. The hospital site has been an eyesore since I've moved here. I've always wondered when it would be torn down and what would take its place. Throughout the years, many prospects have been discussed, but nothing has ever come out of the discussions. The past several months have been some of the toughest times I've had on the Planning Board. I'm tasked with voting down, voting to demolish this building and to allow a warehouse to be built. I recognize that there are citizens that are opposed to this project and that they have valid concerns. I do not take these concerns lightly. However, I feel the town has kicked the can down the road long enough and something needs to be done with this site. Fire Chief O'Brien expressed his concerns about the safety of his firefighters if they had to respond to this site. In December of 1999, a fire broke out in an abandoned warehouse in Worcester. Six firefighters perished while searching for people inside. It keeps me up at night fearing something like this could happen at the hospital site. If we were to deny this permit, the structures would continue to deteriorate, and we would have no idea when something else would come along and what that would be. This warehouse may not be the perfect fit for this site, but it is clear after more than 20 years that this proposal may never come. 2020 showed us how fragile businesses are. Many have closed and will never reopen. Rhino Capital and their team has presented a well-funded, properly engineered facility that removes these structures, replaces them with jobs, a boost to the town's economy, and a local business. That's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Peter. And I will give Planning Board members a chance to speak later if they choose not to now. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor to the public for a public comment. I am going to limit time. And really, what I would like to hear from you are if you're opposed or you support the project, and if so, why? And if you don't want to speak to that, you want to speak to something else, you're free to say whatever you want and speak your mind. So at this time, either electronically or physically raise your hand, and I will call on you. And again, all right, I see Jack Healy from Middleborough Planning Board, his hand has gone up. Jack, you're muted. There you go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Middleborough Planning Board and the town of Middleborough generally, I'd just like to underscore without repeating what I said at your last meeting with respect to the hopes that we have, that we had hoped that you would include, first negotiate along with us and then include in your decision in agreement with the developer to draft an agreement not to use the roads, the cut-over roads, if you will, to Route 44 through Middleborough. And it's clear to me from that discussion last week and the last time we met, and from what you, you as chairman, said, and the lack of contact from Lakeville, that that's not going to happen. I would like to ask the board to consider, if you approve this project, that you insist on the developer sitting with you, your board, and the Middleborough Board to negotiate such an agreement. I believe it's an agreement that can be developed that will meet everybody's needs and prevent some attempts by drivers to take shortcuts or what they might think as shortcuts to get over to the other side of Route 44 going toward Plymouth and then perhaps onto other locations to the north. It, this is a very serious matter. We have not, we have not, as a board, the Planning Board in Middleborough, we have not had a formal discussion about what we might do if you do not respond in a positive way to our request that such an agreement be committed to be negotiated and hopefully include something in the decision to that effect. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the chairman may have.
I don't have any questions for you, Mr. Healy. I didn't want to get into responding to all comments, but I will say that we did put a condition in basically that site traffic, truck traffic shall not use Route 105 to access Route 44 or use Bridge Street. Outside of that, I'm not opposed to town of Middleborough having a meeting with the applicant when there is a tenant, but we're not at that point yet, and we certainly welcome it. So thank you for your comments, Mr. Healy.
There are, Mr. Chairman, there are other roads that get you to the same point at back to Route 44, including Wood Street. I would, I would ask if you were going to include that kind of a sentence in the agreement, that you include all of those possible cut-over streets. And it's not hard to figure out what they are. If you don't know, I can certainly provide you a list.
Very well, and I think that discussion needs to happen when there's a tenant, and I think that you would be invited.
Well, thank you for that. That makes me feel just a little bit better.
Thank you. And moving on, does anyone else have comments?
I guess I have a point of clarification, Mark. It was my understanding partially that the dictating what activities the drivers could do in Middleborough was very limited because it's outside of our jurisdiction. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification. Amy clarified that at the last meeting.
That is true, and I think that's why that Mr. Healy wants an agreement with the tenant, so. We will hopefully have that play out that way. Mr. Kasani, I saw your hand up and then it went down. Would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Knox. My Kasani doesn't run. Just have really two questions. One, last week, I was not allowed to respond to Mr. Tyler's, Mr. Murphy's rebuttal on the pedestrian traffic, and I just want to make sure I heard it clearly. He at one point stated that no more than two trucks per hour would impact the traffic at 79 and 18. And I just want to make sure I heard that correctly because I sat down there this morning from 7:00 to 8:00, and 14, 18 whalers went through today, and there's no building there yet. So I just want to make sure I heard him correctly or, you know, on the risk that I didn't.
Tyler, would you like to speak to that?
Pulling it up now, but regardless, happy to send this a copy to you for your review. Just trying to find that area and give me one moment here, please. The sentence you're referring to, page 2, sentence 1. I'm paraphrasing, not paraphrasing, but I'm shortening the sentence. Commercial drive to the relocated train station may only encounter one to two new trucks on the walk. So it says "may only," and it's not per hour, it's looking at the time it would take to walk. It doesn't take an hour to cross the street, so that's probably where the confusion is coming from.
Okay.
But I happen to send you a copy for your review of what I wrote.
And Mr. Ketchen has my email address.
New trucks as well, Tyler.
Mr. Kasani, I'd like to actually address some of that to you as well because your comments were concerning, and I did look into them, and I was actually fortunate enough to be a part of the South Coast Rail, some of their public hearings, being on the Conservation Commission. I was actually impressed with the work that they did to, when they did the research to figure out if they were going to extend the rail to Fall River or not. The state has the ability to go through the parking lot, and I'm under the impression that they actually ran every license plate to find out where cars were registered to. And roughly 50% of the cars come from south of Lakeville that drive from those southern communities, and they expect the T-volume to be cut in half when the rail stations are actually open south of there. The parking lot that is currently used, that I assume you are referring to the residents in the large buildings with like 24 units each. They have the ability to walk to the existing parking lot, and it would be a shuttle bus that would take them to the new parking lot as well.
Well, I appreciate that information, but I do worry about the traffic. People are not going to walk down to 28 and 18 to cross, or 79, 105, excuse me, 105 and 28, which is where Mr. Murphy said the new lights and the new traffic walkways would be in addition to the one right where the old Chevy dealer is. So it just concerns me that the number of people walking is going to be, could cause some problems. And then I do have a second question. I do have a concern about the conflict of interest of, you know, Board of Appeals members being on the Planning Board, and I'd like that to be addressed because it specifically says in the bylaws that they're not allowed to be. But Mr. Oliveri is on the Board of Appeals and on the Planning Board, correct?
No.
Okay, and that is my mistake.
Yeah, no, he's, he is the chairman.
But he's on the, he's the 43D though, too, correct?
Nope. I'm under the impression he couldn't be on that because
Yes, he's on, he's on both. Mike, you are correct.
But he was on for another board.
It doesn't matter. He's on, he's the chair of the zoning board of appeals.
I don't think you were yielded the floor.
Okay, well, she's made my point. If he's the chairman of the Boarding, the Zoning Board of Appeals and on the 43D, isn't that a conflict that specifically states that's not allowed?
Ms. Questle, would you like to help with that?
Sure. Mr. Oliveri was on the 43D Committee on a separate committee as a representative of a separate committee because sometimes you have volunteers that actually volunteer for more than one board. They should not be therefore penalized for volunteering. Furthermore, even if it is, it's one member, and the 43D Committee unanimously referred this petition to the Planning Board.
And in addition to that, Ms. Questle, does John Oliveri have any vote in this special permit?
He does not. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, the Planning Board is the only board that can grant the special permit to allow this use to go forward.
And really, the purpose of the 43D Committee was just to approve the application being complete?
Yes, exactly. So it was a completeness, it was a completeness review. That was it.
Okay, I do understand that. However, the bylaws say that they cannot be a member.
He was not a member as a zoning board of appeals member. He was a member as another board member. He was not as, he did not represent the zoning board of appeals. And furthermore, there's, there's no, there's no, there's no appeal rights if the, if the petition gets forwarded or doesn't get forwarded, and it was forwarded unanimously. It's neither here nor there at this point.
No, actually, it just, it does question the group, in my opinion, but that's me.
Mark, can you take a moment to explain the 43D Committee that was formed was a compilation of different community members, board members, and followed the rules and guidelines that were laid out in the bylaw, right? So when we formed that 43D Committee, there were members from different boards that attended, just so that the community understands what the process was.
Yeah, it was one member from every board or committee mission within the town to represent equally. And then the review of that committee was only to review, so one set of eyes from every board that might have a say and a discipline in the permit completeness would be present to deem the permit or the application complete to continue one of the process. It was not an approval in any way.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else, anybody else to speak? Mr. Jenkins?
Mike, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak for a minute. You would ask if anyone speaks, if they would maybe start with their, their opinion and why. So let me just say that my personal opinion is, I think Rhino has done a bang-up job, an impressive job in laying out the proposal that they have. And I think the Planning Board and the various boards have also done a lot of work, and it should be recommended. And I also think in today's world, it's still possible for people to have opposing opinions and not be oblige or rude or any of that sort of stuff. So I, I'm always cautious that I come off only that way as respectful and and not waste people's times with goofy stuff. That being said, I am against this proposal. And if we take all the potential legal challenges out of the way for a minute and just look at the proposal, in a sense, this is, to me, it's similar to the Cisco proposal, just a different size. And I just call it Cisco 2.0. And that proposal back then, which we certainly were involved with, required that we, that we received a two-thirds majority vote for the town to approve what that project was going to be, and it didn't get a two-thirds vote. It got a slight minority yes vote, and the majority said no. And I, you know, I can see why they would say that. Nothing against Cisco. They did a great job laying out some stuff, too. I think this plan is better than Cisco's. But I still think that generally the town doesn't want it, and if this was put to a vote where it required a two-thirds majority, it would not pass. And I say that because we've run multiple surveys on Lakeville residents for responsible growth. We've run surveys on Lakeville Helping Lakeville, and all of the surveys come back generally with a slight majority against the project. And I, and I think I can see why. I think it's nothing personal. It's not against anybody that's involved here. It's simply they, a lot of people look at it and say it's a truck terminal, and it, a truck terminal warehouse, they may not be using the correct terminology, but, and it will always be that. The building will always be that. So whether Rhino runs it and then sells it in a decade or two decades, it will always be a terminal for trucks and warehousing. And the, and that's it. If it was a mixed-use operation where there were multiple businesses, businesses could come and go, but the truck terminal will just, it'll be a long-term operation. And, you know, with that being said, the concern, you just hear it again and again and again. You hear the traffic stuff. People want to argue with you. They want to debate the facts. They want to question if it's been looked at. But the traffic just is an issue that won't go away. The poor guys in Middleborough, I mean, honestly, they're afraid they're going to have trucks driving down Main Street, and we know this. When we dealt with Cisco and we dealt with the Planning Board back then, we were absolutely told they control the truck traffic. There's no two ways about it. We advise the drivers where they're going to go, where they're going to come. And we literally drove into Bridgewater at the time, put somebody in a car, and they sat there from 5:00 in the morning till 9:00, and they took picture after picture of Cisco trucks driving right through where they were not supposed to be. And then we brought those pictures into the Planning Board that night and say, here you go. Here's the pictures, date and timestamp. So I firmly believe that all the conversations about we can control the trucks, they're not going to go here, they're not going to go there. Hey, I work in a truck terminal, and I see what the drivers do. They're going to do what they're going to do to get the job done. So this concern about traffic and controlling it, I just don't think it can happen. And, you know, the unfortunate part about this is, and I'll, I have one question if you allow me the time. The unfortunate part about this is, I say this is like a 59 and 1 situation where it only took 59 people in town to vote in a DOD. Whether it covers it or not, it only took 59 people from the town warrant. If you go back and look at the town vote, maybe it was 57. And it took one more person, Mr. Maskey, to say, hey, I'm going to sell it to these guys. 59 and 1, and we just changed the entire environment of the town because of 59 and 1. And I'm against this at this point because I think a project like this, I'm not for it. But you know what? If two-thirds of the town says they're for it, I'm all for it, too. But to rush this through on a 43D with a questionable DOD, when we got 59 plus 1 that has set this up for the town, I just don't think it's right. So to that end, I'll certainly do, and our group will do whatever we can, that if this becomes a yes vote, to try to contest it. And it's nothing personal. It's what, what a lot of people think is best for the town. It's nothing against the board, nothing against Rhino. We just feel this is not the right move for the town. That being said, I have one question if you'll give me the, if you give me the moment, and that is, if there's a yes vote if there's a yes vote for this, what happens after you guys vote yes? What would be the short process between when you say yes and the first backhaul or whatever starts the construction or deconstruction? What has to happen after you say yes, if you do? I'm gonna mute now.
There's a brief waiting period and the special permit would be filed at the town clerk's office. Um, and then I, after whatever grace period, it it becomes law or bylaw. Uh, so I'm gonna say thirty-five days.
There are other steps, they have to go to the Department of Transportation, right, they can't, there's certain things that can't be done until this process is completed.
Well. I'm I'm talking from a town standpoint, there are other permits and things like, they'll still need to go through DOT to get their curb cuts approved, which they can't do until all of the local permitting is done, so there are state-level things that'll continue to happen after the local things are happening or have concluded, I should say. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Jenkins. Uh, so would anybody else like to speak? I see Mr. and Mrs. Scott. Oh, I'm sorry, I I've tried to push ask to unmute and you just got the button.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, thank you, um, I'll try to be brief. Um, at the February eighteenth meeting, I believe, uh, Mary Murphy asked what conditions would be put on the special permit, and I asked who and how they would be enforced. Um, I think is Miss um, Minkowski, who responded to Mary's concerns, and she said the public will be able to hear the conditions that will be listed off, so whatever conditions may be requested as a condition of the approval will be communicated in a public forum. She also tried to assure us that um, you know, that you as a group would welcome the feedback from the public by saying if there's any questions or concerns we have not addressed, we would like to hear from the public on those matters. Um, that that was, that's important to all of us, especially since, I'll I'll give my my reasons, I think that um, Rhino has certainly tried very hard to present a good um, plan. And I've heard a lot of people say how good it looks, uh, and it does, I think that they have worked hard. Um, the only thing I would say, it it's a perfect plan, but a poor fit for this area. The um, the traffic corridor that this would be going into, I think everyone recognizes the difficulty that it would prove, not only for our town, but for Middleborough. And uh, even for people traveling out to Cape uh, once the summer um, transits starts. So at any rate, because of those concerns, um, it's more important at this point for me to ask again. Now, we're hoping that the board will tell us when you will be ready to share your list of conditions that will be put on this special permit, share them with us, the public.
That's gonna happen tonight, right, Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh. So, again, bear with me through two screens, anybody else like to speak? Anne Marie Sharick?
Um, I'm only speaking because you had asked for the people that were participating to give you a, you know, gut, like how we feel about the project. And I'd like to echo a lot of the things that Mr. Jenkins said, um, you know, we feel like we're reliving the past with this project, and at least in that instance, it went to a town vote, and now it feels very much like a very small amount of people are controlling uh, the fate of this side of the town um, and potentially the fate of the entire town, because there's other areas that um, are the, you know, similar size. Um, and to kind of speak to what um, Mr. Conroy said at the beginning, um, yep, it's been sitting there too long and there were, I I don't know that a lot of people know that there were other people that were interested in the property and tried to, you know, follow through with this group that after the whole Cisco thing occurred. Um, and yes, it is a good proposal, but like everyone else has said, I don't think it's the right fit. Um, and I mean, I don't, I think that there are things that we can do to put a little more pressure on the current owner if this does get a no vote, and I I don't think the town is gonna let it just sit there moving forward, so I don't think this has to be the only solution. And thank you, we, I really do appreciate that we're all being given a chance to speak today.
You're welcome, thank you for comments. Uh, anybody else? Barbara, oh, Heather Barrow.
Hi, just briefly, um, I am against the project, um, I have a question, um, the environmental impact report, has that been completed?
That will be filed with NIBA on April fifteenth.
April fifteenth, so you're, you you all can vote before you have the documentation and everything, including that statement not being um, done yet.
Yep.
I do, too.
In theory, could have conditions that would reference that.
Okay, and I just have one more question about the abutters, I know I spoke to Michelle earlier and Kathy, uh, Mary hadn't got back to me about it. Um, I was in touch with the assessor's office, they told us most of Rush Pond Road are three hundred foot of butters. And not one of us received a a letter of the very first um, hearing, so that we didn't find out about till the third hearing. And that was by hearsay on Facebook, so how, whose list are we going by? Uh, the assessor's record in the town of Lakeville or Rhino, I'm just questioning, I don't know where the abutters list came from.
The abutters list was a certified list that I believe the town clerk certified for the three hundred foot line. I recall there was a question because uh, I believe conservation requires of maybe five hundred feet, but planning board only requires three hundred feet.
One hundred feet.
One hundred?
Conservation.
Uh, it's one hundred feet to the buffer zone for notification.
Correct.
Okay, uh, so, or maybe it's ZBA was five hundred feet, but there was some discrepancy, so I think originally uh, the five hundred foot number was floated out there, and I also understand that um, one of the residents of Rush Pond Road works in the assessor's office and may also be opposed to the project and expanded the list. But that's not part of the certified butters list.
No, I got, I I, the assessor's office is getting me that list, and it does have our address on it and half of the street, it's just weird that we didn't get notified, that's all, there's one on record saying we didn't get.
I'm I'm pretty sure it's not the certified abutters list.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Barbara, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanna make one comment before we go on to the next stage, there's been a lot of um, public comment with respect to the tenant and who the tenant is, and you know, why don't we know who the tenant is, and I just wanna share with you my perspective on that. I think it's really important to understand that tenants come and go, just like renters, they're they're using a property for a period of time, and then they're gonna leave. So the town's approach is not to be con- so concerned with the tenant, the, this applicant will have to come back before us once they've identified a tenant, but at this point, our controls and the list that Mark's gonna be covering with us tonight has to do with the property itself, so it's not tenant-specific, and that's a higher level of control for the community um, than it would be if we were just talking to a tenant specifically, so I just wanted to clear the air about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Um. If there are no other questions, um, again, hold your hand up if you wanted to speak, but I'm looking through two screens, I see no other hands. Oh, I'm sorry, I do see that, uh, Pat Ren?
Yes. Um, okay, I'm also concerned about the project and also oppose it because of all of the things that like Mr. Jenkins has gone through, the traffic nightmare, and about how we were all opposed to the Cisco and and I don't understand where everything got crazy with the um, you know, with that cleanup and the whole thing, I it's, I just don't feel like it's a right fit for the town either, and that part of that road is become, already nuts. And I think uh, the concern with the pedestrians as well, because they're crossing the street and I don't know, I've almost hit them, they don't even follow the lights, and then as far as the lights, who's, who's taking care of all the lights that are supposed to be going in there? Is that a state thing?
You you're talking about on the property or on the roads?
No, on the roads, like at Bridge Street.
Mass Highway.
They are taking care of it, we know this.
There's uh, an approved traffic signal, it's in the works, I think in the design stages for the end of Bridge Street. Uh, but because it's on Route one oh five, it's all handled by Mass Highway.
Okay, but um, I am opposed to it, and I also think that it should have a public vote. I know the forty-three D has messed all that up, but anyway, I just wanted to let you know I am opposed to the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your comments.
Thank you.
Daniel Ferrara.
Thank you, um, I I just kind of want you guys to visualize what what one oh five is gonna look like in the next two to three years, by the time the train station is moved and in all the, you know, all the new apartments that have gone in and condos have gone in in this area. Now with the, you know, a a warehouse going in with five sets of lights and probably a quarter of a mile, it's ocean spray being right here, this section of town is gonna look like something out of, I mean, it's gonna be gridlock, it's gonna be absolute gridlock. It's gonna look like something in Waymouth or Quincy or something up that way that that nobody wants to be around. You know, Lakefield, Middleborough, these are small rural towns that, you know, most of us grew up in. Um, it's a hundred percent changing um, the whole character of this area. I I agree with most of the people that have spoke tonight, it's a very small percentage of people um, making a large, very big decision. Um, this is something that should have gone to town meeting, I don't, I wasn't, I wasn't here when um, when that vote happened to change the bylaw on uh, the the zoning change. Um, I haven't seen the minutes from from that meeting, but I I don't believe that the town would vote down two big projects like this, and then understand they're giving up the right to vote or have any opinion really on future projects of the same magnitude or bigger, so that's, that's where I stand.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. At the last planning board for Cisco, I asked a simple question, and the question was, will I hear backup alarms when the project is operating? And I'd like to ask that question and then make a couple comments, so that's my first question. Will I hear truck backup alarms at my house when Rhino Capital is tenant is operating on forty-three Main Street?
I'm not a sound expert, I'm not sure if Tyler has one here, but I I would say at some level, you probably will hear them in the distance, yes.
Okay, having said that, it brings me to.
Sorry, Mr. Mr. Scott, I'll I'll answer it as well, so we had the sound study broken out specifically for your property, and I sent you that directly from myself. Um, and looking at the levels of sound in there, um, myself not being a sound expert, but um, looking at that report and going through it and having it done specifically for you and your property, uh, I would say that it's most likely answer that's no. The the levels at your property are so low, the vast majority are below perceptible. Uh, I know that you are very educated on this, you know that, I believe it's DBA three is perceptible. Vast majority of the time at your specific property, you're below that, so my answer uh, would actually be most likely not.
Okay, having, having, having said that, I don't wanna get into the technical part, but as you know, um, we started out with this project and I was in a dilemma as to whether I wanted to support it, oppose it, or try to influence the outcome, and it's a very hard thing to do. But it's an evolving process, and the evolving process for me was uh, listen to the discussion and then see what comes back across the table. In the area of traffic, uh, transportation demand study was the the major um, mitigation that was proposed. And as you know, there's not much that the planning board can do about traffic because we don't know who the tenant is, so therefore we don't know the volume, so I've kind of sat back and said, okay, the 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 focus is gonna have to be on mass DOT to get something um, out of whatever the final number of vehicles and trucks is gonna be. With regard to noise, there's two approaches, as you well know, um, one is what the uh, increase in sound level is allowed to be, and the other is what we call best available to uh, current technology and economic feasibility. Right now, I don't know what backup alarms are gonna be used, but I know there's a combination from your peer reviewer of four items that could be done to make sure that I don't hear the backup alarms. And while I'm not trying to make it personal, I feel like that is such a fundamental part of this project that to not know, now maybe tonight, the planning board will reveal a uh, condition that addresses that. But right now, I I feel like there's two approaches to sound, one is proactive and one is reactive. And for us to be talking about the fact that we have to rely on a complaint system, and just remember, we're gonna go through demolition and construction before we get to operation. And I dare say, the noise is probably gonna be just as loud during those phases, even if it is short duration. So all I would have to say is, we're gonna be at this, if this project's approved for three years before operation, and then we'll know what we really have. But I really feel the fact that the abutters need to be involved in the building permit process, they need to be involved in uh, the DEP part of this, and I'm I'm very concerned that we will continue to have to fight our way to have our voices heard, and that that concerns me greatly, and with that, I will be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, appreciate your comments and your concerns. Uh, I'm not exactly sure how enough, and a butter would be involved in the building, building permitting process. Uh. Typically, that's strictly applicant and building commissioner, once it gets to that point. Um, Tony Cupy?
Hello?
Yep.
Eighteen Vaughn Street, um, so has there been any discussion about, I know, I know that you guys were talking about you know, really wanting to filter the trucks out towards four ninety-five? Um, you you know, is it possible that trucks could be heading down Vaughn Street and coming through through Rochester, say, or, you know, or over towards?
So let me, I just want to answer that without read the specific condition again. Uh, give me one second to get to that page. All site generated trucks not making local deliveries or pickups will be directed to four ninety five. Uh, directed to and from four ninety five interchange at Route one oh five. Site truck traffic shall not use Route one oh five to access Route forty four or use Bridge Street. So the only reason that a truck would turn right out of that property. Is because it had local commerce. It actually had pickups and deliveries in Lakeville or Rochester.
But could they be coming and then uh that would be the destination and they would be using Vaughn Street via as a route to end up at that destination?
If their delivery was considered local, which.
No, no, I'm saying like it like the the truck might be coming from somewhere else, coming from Rochester, coming from South Shore. Then using the backroads via via Vaughn Street through through uh Marion Road down that way. Coming to the facility. What's gonna mitigate trucks from? I I understand that you're trying to mitigate them from leaving and then directing them towards four ninety five. But that's leaving. I'm talking about arriving. Trucks coming in. What what's? How can it possi- you possibly mitigate trucks coming and arriving through different routes?
Tyler, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, um. I think the answer to your question is just one of. The efficiency and interest of business and commerce, which is always be quick and efficient. You know, taking Vaughn Street that is so far out of the way. It provides just no benefit. You know, a good example of just natural business efficiency is UPS. Many years ago, you can look up the study. It's pretty famous. Uh, certain areas, they rerouted all the trucks to stop taking left-hand turns because typically when you're at a light, you can go right on red. You have to wait to take a left. Everyone experiences that. And even though the right, taking a right was much longer. Um, in some instances, they found that it was efficient. So it's all about. It's just a natural business efficiency. And when you look at Vaughn Street. It I can't see one possible angle you could take and and under any circumstance that it would make sense to do.
Let let me give you one. Okay, so 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 say. Four, five o'clock, when when I'm coming home off four ninety five like I do every day. And traffic is starting to pick up down near McDonald's Chase Chevrolet. It takes more time for an eighteen wheeler to try to get into the facility now if they were arriving there. That's why in Middleborough on Wood Street, where trucks come from forty four. Um, down from Plymouth, they'll take they'll take Wood Street so that they can get through the back center of town if they're if they want to cross town rather than go through the rotaries. Because they get jammed up during peak hours. That's why trucks would do that because of traffic. And that's, I I know you're saying, yes, in the interest of business, but. When when trucks need to cut time, they find alternate routes and Vaughn Street will be one of those alternate routes, unfortunately. So I'm I'm very concerned with that. And I don't think it can be something that's overlooked. It I I, you know, I grew up on uh Wareham Street in Middleborough. And I see trucks running up Wareham Street constantly. Up through Seachem Street and there there's a lot of trucking that happens in in Middleborough as well. Um, down off twen- off twenty eight as well, so. As as for that that argument, I I just don't buy it. I just don't. I see that the trucks tear up those roads constantly and I had I have for the last thirty years. So so that's that's one of my comments. Two, I mean, you know, I I don't feel it's a great, great fit for the town either. And if it is such a fit for the town, I mean, yes, we all want to see the hospital come down. We we know it's been sitting there as an eyesore. What actual, I mean, are there tax benefit numbers that? The planning board or the town can share with the people to say, look, this is how it's gonna affect your taxes and they're gonna go down because I hear that from a lot of people in town. That, you know, they feel like it's gonna be this. You know, their taxes are gonna dr- drop and they're gonna save thousands of dollars a year. I mean, is that? Is there any truth to that, Mark, or does the planning board have any insight on that?
I think the number was, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was four hundred thousand dollar estimated revenue, additional revenue from. The taxation on this property, Tyler, does that sound right to you?
Yes.
About right.
Um, and. It was discussed earlier here in Tony. This is a little bit redundant. Um, it it was, again, it was addressed. It's. Not something that you're probably gonna get a cut in the taxes unless you want to run for selectmen and hope for your own tax cut. I'm pretty sure that they would. Any select board, I'm not picking on this select board, but the the money is viewed as a revenue and it's gonna be used either for ball fields or. Uh, infrastructure or something, or the schools get it.
Right. Okay, so well, I just want to put that to bed then because I think that some people falsely think that because, you know, a hundred and twenty eight bay trucking facility might be going in. It's some people in support might be saying, great, that then my taxes are gonna go down. And you're saying that that's probably not the case. Because it will be used elsewhere in town into other other infrastructure. Which which.
Yeah, exactly. To your point, it would better the town. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jenkins. Was my point. No, I I don't think it's better in this.
Mr. Chair, may I just say one thing to.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Um, I just want to show you guys from, this is from the master plan. Um, eighty six percent is residential. So what this is gonna do is going to actually affect the residential percentage. So when you're talking tax base, that's what we're talking.
And your point, it takes a burden off the residential tax base. Uh, Mr. Jenkins.
Thanks. I I know I spoke once. Just one comment. When a gentleman's talking about controlling truck traffic and all that. Our experience with Cisco and doing the research on it is there. We we felt that a research said that there's no legal way that someone can control. The uh route that a truck driver chooses to take when he's driving a vehicle. There's just no legal way to control it. You can recommend, you can suggest. But which has been brought up before, they're gonna take the most efficient way to get to where they're going. Just for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. On that, I'm gonna let that be the conclusion of comments for now. And. So I'm gonna go through uh last week findings were read into the record. First finding. Seven point four point one point one. Uh, and this is all, it's pursuant to the town of Lakeville zoning bylaw, section seven point four point one. The special permit granting authority. Finds that the following conditions are met. One, use is not noxious, harmful or hazardous, is socially and economically desirable. And will be. And will meet an existing and or potential need. Two. The advantages of the proposed use outweigh any detrimental effects and such detrimental effects. On the neighborhood and the environment will not be greater than could be expected from development, which could occur. If the special permit were denied. That's seven point four point one point two. The third finding, seven point four point one point three. The applicant has no reasonable alternative to accomplish this purpose in a manner more compatible. With the character of the immediate neighborhood. Number four. It's seven point four point one point three. The special permit granting authority. Finds that the proposal generally conforms to the principles of good engineering, sound planning. And correct land use and that the applicant has the means to implement the proposal if a special permit is granted. It goes into part B. Pursuant to the town of Lakeville's zoning bylaws, section seven point nine point four. Special permit granting authority affirmatively finds the following. That the water and the sewage facilities will be adequate. To service the activities without a detrimental effect upon the municipal services in any area of the town. Two. That the activities are consistent with the comprehensive plans of the planning board for general development of the town of Lakeville as a whole. As well as for the Development Opportunities District. Three. That the activities are compatible with or separated by sufficient space. Or topographical features from adjacent areas. Four, that resources of open space, surface and groundwater are protected and preserved. Five. That public health and safety are secured. Section C. Special permit granting authority affirmatively makes the following additional findings. Number one, under section seven point nine point three point two. The property consists of twenty five or more acres and is located in the Development Opportunities District. And eligible to receive a special permit under section seven point four and seven point nine of the bylaws. Two. A special permit is granted pursuant to section seven point nine point two. To allow the uses in section seven point nine point two point one. A, B, C, and G. And accessory uses to such primary uses. Third, the project meets the intent of seven point nine point one. For appropriate activities for large land areas provided opportunities for econo- economic development. Protects natural resources. And has limited impacts related to the scale of the development. Four, the project has been reviewed and designed by professional engineers and is in compliance with seven point nine. Wait five of the bylaw. Five, legal notice and publication was undertaken in full compliance with forty A. And the zoning bylaw. Additionally, the town of Lakeville provided supplemental noticing. Over and above what was required, such as mailings, mailing all the butters within three hundred feet. A notice before each hearing. Six. The applicant has been through incomplete in their presentations. They have been diligent in responding and closing out peer review comments, questions. Seven. The special permit granting authority has provided ample opportunities to abutters. And to other interested Lakeville residents to voice their comments and concerns about the project. Eight. The applicant has been diligent and thorough in their responses to public comment questions at the public hearings. The applicant's has presented all project components in a thorough, competent, complete. And digestible manner. Ten. The applicant has made significant site improvements to address comments and concerns from abutters and peer reviewers. As described in hearing number five. So as to mitigate mitigate noise and visual impacts from the project as they made large grading. Planting, sensing changes. The project is compliant with mass DEP noise policy as well as zoning bylaw and special permit conditions. Eleven, all peer review comments, questions have been addressed and closed out. There are no outstanding comments and questions. Twelve, the applicant has been responsive to and incorporate comments, requests. From the Open Space Committee. Thirteen, the decision is reflective of and incorporates all materials. Presentations, submissions, memos, letters, responses, et cetera, submitted by the applicant. Fourteen, the applicant has demonstrated. What the benefits of the project, such as asbestos remediation. Demolition, solid waste disposal area removal. Tax revenue, job creation, public safety are achieved while also being the least impactful development proposed to date for this site. Fifteen, as discussed above, the project also meets. The purpose of site plan review pursuant to section six point seven of the zoning bylaw. So. I move to accept findings read by the applicant at the March eighteenth. Twenty twenty one public hearing and incorporate them into the decision on the special permit and site plan approval. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, uh Barbara Mankowski.
Hi.
Peter Conroy.
Aye.
Michelle McCracken.
Aye.
Jack Lynch.
Aye.
Myself, oh, I. Motion to accept the findings carries unanimously. The second section of this document is waivers. A letter requesting waivers was submitted by Robert J. Mather Esquire on March second, twenty twenty one. The list below is reflect is a reflection of that letter and includes a correction to density bonus. Division seven point nine point six G of the zoning bylaw. Writes that the special permit granting authority may waive strict compliance with this regulation. When in the judgment of the special permit granting authority, such action is in the public interest and consistent. With the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaws. The applicant considers this list to be complete. Special permit granting authority hereby grants the following waivers in accordance with the plans submitted. Namely, C two point O. Number one, to allow the maximum building height to this project of forty five feet. Number two, to allow a maximum percentage of land covered by structures, parking and paved area as fifty eight percent. Three, to allow for an eight foot tall fence within the setback one hundred foot buffer strip. As shown on the approved plan. Number four. Allow for parking as outlined within the parking summary chart included on C two point O. Chart listed parking spaces counts in line with all submitted documents. Two hundred and ninety eight spaces day one and two hundred and six land bank spaces. So I move to grant waivers to allow maximum building height for this project of forty five feet. Allow maximum percentage of land covered by structures, parking and paved area at fifty eight percent. Allow for the eight to foot tall fence within the setback one hundred foot buffer strip as shown on the approved plan. And allow for parking as outlined within the parking summary chart included on plan C two point O. I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Barbara Mankowski.
Aye.
Peter Conroy.
Aye.
Michelle McCracken.
Aye.
Jack Lynch.
Aye.
Myself, oh, I. Motion carries unanimously. So. At this point, I'm gonna read the conditions. I'm going to group them by category. If any planning board member has an issue with a. If any planning board member has an issue with a condition, please state hold and I will mark that condition for an individual vote. The first section, general conditions, section A. A.1. Except as may be provided for the following conditions or in the approved plans referenced below, the project, including all project driveways, and shall be constructed substantially in conformance with the plans and drawings listed below in this condition. A.1, which for purposes of the special permit, shall be considered the approval plan, approved plans for the project. Called out as approved plans, the approved plan consists of the following. Plans entitled Site Plans, Lakeville Hospital Redevelopment, 43 Main Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts, prepared by VHB, revised through March 9th, 2021, consisting of 40 sheets. A.2. Project shall comply with all local regulations of the town of Lakeville and its boards, commissions, and departments unless specifically waived herein. A.3, the applicant shall copy the board on all correspondence between the applicant and any federal, state, or town official, board, or commission concerning the conditions set forth in this decision, including but not limited to all testing results, official findings, or official filings, environmental approvals, and other permits issued for the project. A.4. Except as otherwise specifically provided herein, where this decision provides for the submission of plans or other documents for approval by the building inspector or other town departments, the building inspector or applicable department head will use reasonable efforts to review and provide written responses within 30 days following submissions, or submissions that require assistance from an outside consultant as determined by the building inspector or applicable department head. The 30-day time period shall not begin until the consultant's fee has been fully funded by the applicant. A.5, A.5. The provisions of this special permit decision are and conditions shall be binding upon successors and assigns of the applicant. And the obligations shall run with the land. In the event that the applicant sells, transfers, or assigns its interests in the development, this special permit shall be binding upon the purchaser, transferee, or assignee and any successor purchases, purchasers, transferies, or assignees. The term owner, as used in the special permit, shall be referred to the applicant, owner, any successor in interest or successor in control of the property, referenced in the special permit and supporting documents, the planning board shall be notified in writing within 30 days of all transfers of title and any portion of property that portion of property that take place prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. A.6, sidewalks, driveways, utilities, drainage systems, and all other infrastructure shown on the approved plans as serving the project shall remain private in perpetuity and the town of Lakeville shall not have now or in the future any legal responsibility for the operation or maintenance of infrastructure, including but not limited to snow removal, drainage, and landscape maintenance. A.7. Variations to timelines imposed herein may be waived at a duly noticed public meeting by the planning board at the sole discretion of the planning board. If the planning board determines that a public hearing pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, is required, the modification variation shall be considered after the requirements for notice pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, have been complied with. A.8, exercise of the special permit decision becomes fully vested and is not subject to any phased construction or delay in completing future phases per 7.9.6D. A.9, the owner will provide the owner will provide, will serve letters from the local utilities to the town of Lakeville when received. These letters will be provided prior to the completion of demolition. A.10, this approval allows the construction of 504 parking spaces, 298 parking spaces will be constructed as part of the first phase of the project, and 206 spaces will be reserved and only built if needed. The owner will only construct the amount of parking required by the project's tenant. Construction of additional parking spaces or any reserved parking spaces as shown in the site plans will require the resubmission of plans, traffic studies, or all approved by the board. Or approval by the board, excuse me. A.11. This project approval is for a warehouse use, which is defined herein as a use that is primarily devoted to the storage of materials. In the event that a tenant for the property desires to operate a facility that is different from the traditional warehouse use, the owner shall seek a modification from the board with a revaluation of project impacts. This includes any uses that serve as regional or local freight forwarder for time-sensitive shipments or regional or local distribution facility. A.1, A.12. The applicant or successor shall reevaluate project impacts, including but not limited to noise, traffic, stormwater, et cetera, and meet with the board once a tenant is selected for the facility. In the event that, at the sole discretion of the board, the project impacts are greater than characterized in the project application submittal, the applicant shall apply for an amendment to the special permit issued by the planning board, as well as any additional permits obtained from local regulatory agencies. A.13. High-hazard use groups, as defined and regulated by Massachusetts State Building Code 780 CMR, are prohibited from occupying this facility or any land area associated with this approval. A.14. The owner will post a bond in the amount of $1 million as a surety to guarantee the cleanup of the solid waste and hazardous materials and buildings on the property. Demolition of the existing facilities, including the existing buildings, will be performed in a phased manner. Bond value can be reduced upon the request of the owner and approval by the board determined in a public meeting.
Mark, I'd like to say hold on A.14.
Thank you. A.15. Copies of all additional permits received, including but not limited to: A, water quality certification from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection; B, certificate of single environmental impact report from the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs will be provided to the town of Lakeville Planning Board. A.16, licensed site professional will oversee the removal of the solid waste disposal area to ensure all materials are handled in accordance with the appropriate state regulations. Copies of observation reports will be submitted to the town of Lakeville. A.17, copies of all grading or construction easements will be provided to the town of Lakeville by the owner. A.18. Any costs incurred by the town of Lakeville regarding the hiring of outside consultants to monitor progress during construction, similar to the tax outlined on the proposed schedule submitted by environmental partners dated March 30th, 2021, and approved by the chairman of the planning board, will be borne by the owner. A.19, any costs incurred by the town of Lakeville regarding the hiring of outside consultants to review additional documents prepared as part of the application or an amendment to the special permit will be borne by the owner. A.20. The owner shall provide the board and building inspector with recording information documenting the fact that an order of conditions for the project issued by the Conservation Commission or Mass DEP has been recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and that all appeals, if any, have been exhausted. This special permit includes the conditions described in the Order of Conditions for this project issued by the Lakeville Conservation Commission. A.21, in the event the project is substantially changed based on comments received through the MEPA process, the owner will inform the planning board regarding the changes. The planning board will determine if the changes require an amendment to the special permit. If so, the owner will request an amendment to the special permit and submit the required documentation. A.22. In the event that the applicant or successor proposes a change or changes to the project that they believe to be minor or insubstantial with regard to the project's impacts, they may request to appear before the board at a duly noticed public meeting of the planning board and request of the board to approve the proposed change or changes. If it is determined by the board at its sole discretion that the proposed change or changes are minor or insubstantial changes that do not increase project impacts, if any, the board may modify the special permit to incorporate such changes. If the board determines that the changes are substantial changes, the applicant or successor shall be required to apply for an amendment or modification to the special permit and comply with the notice requirements of General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11. So. That concludes the first section of general conditions. At this point, I would like to make a motion. I move to issue conditions. A.1 through A.22, except for A.14 as drafted.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second for all of the conditions in general conditions except for A.14. Motion and a second, all in favor, Barbara.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Jack.
Aye.
Myself, vote aye. Those conditions pass carry unanimously. Back to A.14. The owner will post a bond in the amount of $1 million as a surety to hold guarantee the cleanup of solid waste and hazardous material and buildings on the property. Demolition of the existing facilities, including the existing buildings, will be performed in a phased manner. Bond value can be reduced upon the request of owner and approval by the board determined in the public meeting. Barbara, would you like to state something?
Yes, you know, I don't want to be unreasonable about the expectations. I realize there is a cost to getting a bond, but in the interest of the town, it's very important to me that we have sufficient funds to adequately clean up this property. If this project is approved, it is strongly because of the environmental issues that are happening over there. I would like to recommend a $3 million bond as opposed to a $1 million bond. And I would be open to developer escrowing the funds on an interest-bearing account. If they want to blend a surety with an escrow-bearing account, I would support that. It's a short time. We're going to have this building down hopefully soon enough if it gets approved.
Okay, I personally feel that the structure of the $1 million and the planning board having the discretion to release or not whatever amount until they're satisfied is sufficient, but it's, I guess, up to the entire board. Peter, do you have any comment regarding this?
Oh, I know it's up to us, but I am curious as to Tyler's take on increasing that to 3 million. Obviously, he probably won't like it, but thoughts? And what does a million-dollar bond cost compared to a 3 million-dollar bond? When you get to that range, is it a huge increase in true cost?
Peter, thank you. You know, of course, you know, we talked about this previously, the $1 million, you know, is intended to be sort of a make-safes, meaning that if work were to start or never start at all, there would be a million dollars in terms of trying to make make-safes the conditions that are existing. That's what the number represents, and that's what the dollar figure represents as intended from my understanding. If the bond value were to be increased, which is of course the planning board's decision, I think the only thing I would ask in consideration is that it is a blend of a surety and an escrow-bearing account, and that the majority of which, two-thirds, would be a surety-style bond.
That answers my question mark. I'm okay with that then, Barbara's suggestion.
Michelle or Jack, do you have any comment on that?
Um, I would say that, you know, if I mean, considering the figures that we've seen for the full demolition, I and it doesn't sound like Tyler is, you know, fully objecting to it. I don't. I don't see, you know, what it could hurt, because I mean, it's obviously funds they'd get back after it's completed.
Well, just clear, they're not going to get all the funds back. There's a cost to them for taking out the surety bond. That's why we wanted to offer them the opportunity to have a blend where the money could go into an interest-bearing account. But if he's comfortable with doing two-thirds on the surety side and one on the escrow side, that's fine with me. I'm just trying to be cooperative and protect the town.
Mark, if I might add to this too, in, to Barbara's point, if the town were to take this over, any prices that Tyler has from contractors wouldn't apply to us, we would be paying probably quite a bit higher. So if he's got bids for a certain amount, ours are going to skyrocket, so.
Understood. So. Ms. Questle, I have amended this condition. I would like to read it once to you, and with your approval, I would motion it individually that the owner will post a bond in the amount of $3 million with a two-thirds surety and equity. Is that suitable right there? And do I need to define which is which?
I would say, I would say the amount of $3 million to guarantee the cleanup of solid waste and hazardous materials and buildings on the on the property, demolition of the existing facilities, including the existing buildings, will be performed in a phased manner. Said guarantee will be in the form of two-thirds as surety and one-third as escrow, and then Barbara, does that automatically mean that it's an interest-bearing or do we need to specifically um, Barbara, does that automatically mean that it's an interest bearing or do we need to specifically state that?
I think we should state that.
Okay, and then, um, and then the, the only question that I had is, um, um, the last sentence of the, um, existing draft condition, um, says that the bond value may be reduced upon request of the owner and approval by the board determined in a public meeting. So, um, how would that reduction work?
So, uh, would it still just be at the discretion for the amount of the planning board at that point based on what's completed?
Right, and where would it come out of? Would it come out of the total? Do you, would it come, would it actually?
It would only be for the escrow amount.
So it would only be for the escrow, okay. And that, that would be, yeah, and that would be a million. So that, that would be fine. That would work out.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I didn't write any of that down.
I did. And the owner will post a bond in the amount of three million dollars as surety to guarantee the cleanup of solid waste and hazardous materials and buildings on the property. Um, the form of the, the form of the guarantee shall be two thirds surety and one third equity and one third escrow. And then the, the, the bond value can be reduced upon the request of the owner and approval of the board determined in a public meeting.
So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
So I have a, a motion and a second, all in favor, Barbara?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
So motion carries unanimously, A fourteen has been amended. Section B, construction. B one. The owner and the owner's contractor will conduct a pre-construction meeting with the appropriate, appropriate town staff, including but not limited to the building commissioner, health agent, a representative from the conservation commission and, uh, planning board prior to the start of demolition and the start of building foundations. B two. Demolition and construction, not including interior work, hours will be limited to seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday and eight AM to four PM on Saturdays. Vehicles may enter the property up to one and a half hour prior to construction start times and personnel may remain on the property for up to one hour after construction end times for cleanup work only. This shall not apply to passenger vehicles and trips associated with interior work. No heavy equipment such as, uh, except for a sweeper shall be utilized before or after listed start and end times. The hours of construction may be modified by the board at a duly noticed public meeting at the recommendation of the building commissioner. No construction will be allowed on Sundays or on the following holidays. Christmas, New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day. B three, during construction, Route one oh five Main Street is to be swept clean of sediment and debris as often as needed. B four, dust control, including but not limited to the use of water trucks will be used throughout the construction period to mitigate dust leaving the site. B five. Landscape berms shall be constructed as early in the demolition and construction as process as logically possible. The owner shall submit a construction schedule including the construction of landscape berms prior to any demolition or construction activities on site. B six. Owner and contractor shall be responsible for cleanup and disposal of any debris that may blow onto abutting properties and, uh, and perform daily checks of debris. B seven. Any and all hazardous materials, including asbestos, shall be handled and removed consistent with the all application of all applicable state and federal guidelines. Copies of all documentation regarding the handling and removal of hazardous materials will be provided to the town of Lakeville. B eight. Any police details required by the project will be the responsibility of the owner and contractor. B nine, all asbestos containing materials shall be abated and or removed from the existing buildings pursuant to three ten C M R seven point zero zero and or any order issued by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. Demolition of buildings will occur as outlined on the proposed demolition schedule submitted by Rhino Capital dated March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. The applicant may apply for one demolition permit for the project but may only conduct structural dismantling on up to three buildings at one time. Any modification of the demolition schedule may be modified by the board at a duly noticed public meeting of the planning board upon recommendation of the building commissioner. B ten, solid waste disposal area and all associated pollutants associated with the solid waste disposal area will be completely removed prior to the construction of infiltration basin one. Removal of solid waste disposal area will be observed by a licensed site professional, professional engineer. The removal of the solid waste disposal area that impacts the wetlands, five hundred and ten square feet is to be inspected by a professional wetland scientist. B eleven. Applicant shall adopt a pest management plan acceptable to the building commissioner and health agent prior to demolition. That concludes uh, construction conditions. So at this point, I move to issue conditions, B one through B eleven as drafted.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, Barbara?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Myself, motion carries unanimously through B one through B eleven. Section C, noise. C one. The owner will perform one post-construction sound level measurement study six months after project startup. Additional measurements may be required if increased noise is observed at abutting properties. At the discretion of the town of Lakeville, any increase in noise level over levels described in the memorandum entitled Lakeville Mass Warehouse Sound Study Dash Project Grading and Berm Height Update dated February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one will be deemed a violation of the special permit and action will be required to reduce noise levels to approved levels. Noise levels will be compared to sound levels described in the memorandum as calculated and described in the columns headed as February twenty twentieth, twenty twenty one. Any additional studies will be conducted by the same principles, methods, parameters as the sound study for the project, Lakeville Mass Warehouse Sound Study Reference four five nine seven dated October twenty ninth, twenty twenty. And any additional study is recommended to be conducted by Tech Environmental to ensure consistency. However, if another reputable established firm is tasked to do the study, it can be reviewed and commented on by Tech Environmental. Any firm that cannot prove relevant experience, reputability, locality and sound understanding of the standards in which the sound studies are performed cannot and should not perform the study. C two. All emergency generators should have a manufacturer approved exhaust muffler. C three, all emergency generators should be scheduled for daytime only testing. C four, mechanical rooftop units shall be limited to three. Specifications associated with the mechanical rooftop units must be consistent with those levels indicated in the sound study, Lakeville Mass Warehouse Sound Study Reference four five nine seven dated October twenty nine, twenty twenty. Their power levels shall be consistent with those described in the pre-construction sound study. C five, if the tenant requires refrigeration equipment or trucks will be using the site that require refrigeration, the applicant is required to resubmit to the planning board or amendment to the special permit for the use of these units as well as use of refrigeration units. C six, refrigeration, refrigerator trucks reefers are not allowed for use on the property. Any proposed use of refrigeration, refrigerator trucks will be required planning board approval. Will require planning board approval. C seven, the owner and tenant will endeavor to use low noise backup beepers for tenant owned trucks. C eight, the proposed acoustic fence or equivalent will be maintained in good condition in perpetuity. C nine, future tenants shall complete a sound management plan to submit the planning board, to, to submit to the planning board, the sound mitigation plan will ensure that the total sounds generated by the site is below levels identified in the Tech Environmental Memorandum dated February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. C ten. Any tenant owned or leased loading equipment or machinery, including forklifts, yard trucks, mules, et cetera, that mostly operate externally of the building will include reduced decibel backup alarms if legally allowed. C eleven. Intermittent or occasional noise shall not exceed ten decibels over ambient levels as described in the noise memorandum dated February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one at residential receptors. That concludes the section for noise. So at this time, I move to issue conditions. C one through C eleven as drafted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, Barbara?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Myself, motion carries unanimously. Section D, lighting and landscape, landscaping and lighting. D one. All site landscaping will be maintained in good condition in perpetuity. The town of Lakeville reserves the right to inspect all landscaping for five years to ensure it's, is being maintained properly and provide screening as intended by the project's landscape architect. D two. All landscape materials shall be installed prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. A temporary certificate of occupancy may be issued absent of full installation. D three. Upon selection of a tenant, a site lighting schedule will be provided by the owner to the town of Lakeville. The owner will endeavor to reduce lighting either by turning lights off or including dimmers on specific lights as appropriate. The lighting schedule shall be dark sky compliant and endeavor to have temperatures of lighting to be three thousand K or lower and pole on, mounted on poles of a dark color. D four. The landscape plan will be revised and submitted to the town of Lakeville to ensure the silt fence and straw wattle line is consistent on all drawings and that they are required to remain for the duration of construction activity to ensure the protection of the woodland, woodland edges. D five. All shrubs planted within the parking area will be maintained and pruned to not exceed four feet in height. D six. Snow will not be stored on the proposed planting areas. D seven. The owner will provide a watering plan to the town of Lakeville for establishment of the proposed landscaping. This plan will be in effect for two years following the installation of site landscaping. The contractor will be bound by the requirements of this plan to ensure a landscape is established. D eight. The owner will provide a landscape maintenance plan to the town of Lakeville that stipulates that creeping red fescue will be mown only once annually in the spring. D nine. The owner shall submit a landscape maintenance plan to the planning board for review and approval. Said plan shall include specifics regarding the removal of invasive species in areas disturbed by the current development and those that appear following planting. As slopes greater than two to one on the western berm and adjacent to the parking and drives at the southeast and northwest corners of the site are too steep to be safely mown, invasive species will not be able to be controlled by mowing. These slopes will be maintained cons- consistent with the maintenance plan directives for the removal and management of invasive species. D ten. The owner will include in the landscape maintenance plan protocols by month and year for the establishment and maintenance of meadow areas. That concludes, uh, landscaping and lighting. So I move to issue conditions. D, uh, one through D ten as drafted. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, Barbara? Peter?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Myself, vote aye. I've just received a reminder, um, at this time, I'd like to make a motion uh, to close the hearings, the public comments.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, Barbara?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Michelle? Jack?
Hi.
Motion carries. Section E, traffic. E one. A traffic monitoring plan will be conducted as directed by Mass DOT in five annual intervals with ongoing communication with the town of Lakeville and the appropriate Mastod units, including the public and private development unit titled P P D U and the District Five Office. Monitoring plan will begin six months after initial occupancy of the warehouse. Post-opening data collection will consist of automatic traffic recorder counts, uh, to be conducted for a continuous tip, uh, typical one week, seven day period at each site driveway. Turning movement counts will be collected at select study area intersections to be determined by Mastod and the town of Lakeville during the morning and evening peak hour of the same weekday. Any additional requirements imposed by the MIPA review shall be incorporated into the traffic monitoring plan. E two. The owner shall require that the tenant implement a transportation demand management program on site to promote the use of alternative modes of transportation and to minimize the use of single occupancy vehicles as specified in the project's traffic impact and access study dated October twenty twenty, October twenty twenty. E three. All site generated trucks not making local deliveries or pickups will be directed to and from Route four ninety five interchange at Route one oh five. Site truck traffic shall not use Route one oh five to access Route forty four or use Bridge Street.
Mark, I'd like to place a hold on E three.
E four, the project average trip generation shall be equal or less than the following thresholds. Six hundred and eighty two total vehicle trips per day. Two hundred and forty two trucks per day or seventy seven vehicle trips per hour. Vehicle trips per hour. If a specific tenant. Is identified by the applicant that is anticipated to generate traffic exceeding. Any of the aforementioned thresholds, the applicant may apply for an amendment to the special permit and produce. A new traffic impact study using trip generation specific. To that tenant to prove no substantial impacts will result. And following review. And approval by the town to adjust the above specified threshold limits as approved. Second bullet. Following the site being in operation and recognize that trip generation may slightly exceed. Above noted thresholds occasionally, the permit will. Be violated if. The five day Monday through Friday work week average site generated traffic counted during the monitoring efforts exceeds. The above thresholds. Or if any time during the seven day week, the thresholds exceed in excess of ten percent. If the permit is violated, the applicant shall produce new traffic impact study. To prove no impacts result from their view and the approval by the town. Third bullet. In the event. That there is a permanent and substantial change in traffic delay or a change in level of service grade. As a result of the increase in site generated trips identified during the supplemental study. The owner shall be responsible for all off-site mitigation required to mitigate the increase in trips. With physical improvements in coordination with the town and Mastod. E five, all supplemental town traffic reviews of the project, including. Reviews of the monitoring plan data shall be funded by the owner of the site. That concludes. So I move to issue conditions. E one through E five except for E three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor Barbara?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Myself, I. E one, two, four, and five carry unanimously. Barbara, keep in mind the meeting is closed to public comment. So only discussion would be of the planning board. All site generated trucks not making local deliveries or pickups will be directed to and from. Yeah, I nine I four ninety-five interchange at Route one oh five. Site truck traffic shall not use Route one oh five to access Route forty four or use Bridge Street. You would make an amendment?
Yes, um I'd like to include Route seventy-nine um in that site truck trucks. Site truck truck traffic shall not use Route seventy-nine. Nor shall it use Route one oh five and I really it's it doesn't really matter where they're accessing. To me, access to Route forty-four or use Bridge Street. It's more keeping that trap that truck traffic off of those highly residential streets. And I think doing this would uh make the residents feel a lot more comfortable as you heard we had someone talking about Vaughn Street. And if trucks can't cross over to get onto seventy-nine that thorough way. Um, you know, all the little cutovers would be not available to them. So I'd like to amend to include Route seventy-nine. And I guess my question's for Amy because when we originally talked about this. I was under the impression that we we may not be able to condition for a state road. But Route one oh five is a state road, so if we can condition for one oh five, we should also be able to condition for seventy-nine, right?
State road.
Correct, um so we're not necessarily um. We're not necessarily conditioning um. The fact that they cannot go on the road, I just want to make it clear. It says that all site generated trucks not making local deliveries or pickup. Will be directed to and from the four ninety-five interchange at Route one oh five. So um we're asking them if they're not making local deliveries or pickup that they should they cannot use. Those routes.
Correct, I guess my feeling is if we're going to call out in the next sentence Route one oh five, then we should amend to include Route seventy-nine as well. And I guess if if it's okay with you, I'd like to propose that to the board.
Yes, I have I have that.
Okay.
Okay, so if I understand. All site generated trucks not making local deliveries or pickups will be directed to and from. The I four ninety-five interchange at Route one oh five.
Correct.
Site truck traffic shall not use Route seventy-nine comma Route one oh five. To access Route forty-four or use Bridge Street.
Yes, I mean, I'm hoping one oh five, I would like to see them not going south on that either to cut over uh to get to one forty. I would like to see. But, okay, if this is if this is what we need to do, use one oh five to access Route forty-four or use Bridge Street.
So we're already directing them north to four ninety-five. And the only reason they could turn south on one oh five is that they were making local deliveries.
Right, okay, as long as we're going to keep the traffic off of seventy-nine and then the one will five won't happen because they're going to be. Not doing, you know, they'll only be doing the local deliveries in order to be there. Route seventy-nine is a highly truck trucks are driving on the road all the time, so. It's just would increase in a more, you know, most of them are coming up seventy-nine and then crossing over to eighteen. And in this case, I can see them crossing through that residential area um over by, you know. And then that then that just concerns me, so that's my suggestion on the amendment.
Eighteen wheels are going up and down seventy-nine all day long.
We need to slow that down.
So was the last stated condition that I read? Yep, just the addition of Route seventy-nine.
Correct.
Uh, may I, Mark?
Go ahead, Michelle.
We've we've been talking about Vaughn Street this evening, could we add Vaughn Street to that as well?
I don't think it would hurt, I mean, I think that probably no trucks are ever gonna go down it, so that's fine.
If they were to take a right and go on to Vaughn Street, they would land on seventy-nine and they couldn't go anyplace, they'd have to make a U-turn. They wouldn't be able to do it.
Unless they went left on Vaughn Street.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, yeah. You're right, guess they could. Could we amended to say you cannot use Route one oh five unless driving north to four ninety-five? And get them off of.
Doesn't it already say that in the first sentence?
We specify not using Route one oh five to access Route forty-four or use Bridge Street.
All site generated trucks not making local deliveries or pickups will be directed to and from. The I four not four ninety-five interchange everywhere.
Yep. Well, if you want to name another street, I I'm primarily concerned about seventy-nine, I don't know about Vaughn Street. I I would be concerned about that road too, that's a residential area as well, so I don't mind adding that in.
Send you. Amy, is there a way to just condition it because I feel like this could grow into everybody's street in town? Uh, to to say. Secondary roads.
Yes. That's good, Mark, I'm happier with that than just naming up individual streets.
So it will be second, it will be secondary or town owned or private roads.
Perfect.
All right, all site generated trucks not making local deliveries or pickups will be directed. To and from the I four ninety-five interchange at Route one oh five. Site truck traffic shall not use seventy-nine. Comma Route one oh five. To access Route forty-four. Or use Bridge Street or any secondary. Roads town owned or private throughout Lakeville.
Mark, the only amendment I would have to that is can you add the word or after the comma after seventy-nine Route seventy-nine comma or. Route one oh five. Otherwise, I'll second that motion.
So the first sentence doesn't change. Site truck traffic shall not use Route seventy-nine or Route one oh five to access Route forty-four. Or use Bridge Street or any secondary roads throughout Lakeville. So I moved to uh to issue. E three as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Barbara? Peter?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
So motion carries unanimously. Section F, operations. F one, trucks will not idle onsite for more than five minutes. F two, snow will be removed from the tops of trailers prior to them leaving the site. F three. The entry booths will be operated to provide security for the tenant. F four, the tenant shall endeavor to dim. Or shut off the lights on the southwest side of the building between ten PM and six AM. F five, delivery vans consistent with a fulfillment center are not allowed. Then a substantial without a substantial modification. Of or amendment to this special permit. F six, use of drones for shipping and receiving is not allowed. F seven, loading dock activity will be restricted on the southwest side of the building. Adjacent to Rush Pond Road from twelve AM to six AM. Trucks and other vehicles will be allowed to drive through this area. Of the property during this time, but will not be able to use unload, unload, or idle in this area between twelve AM and six AM. With the exceptions of. The loading dock days six through fifteen on the sketch plan attached here to. For rain active, this represents an eighty-seven percent reduction on loading dock activity in that area during those hours. F eight, vehicle fueling stations will not be included onsite with the exception of electric charging stations. That concludes operations, section F. I move to issue conditions F one. Through F eight as drafted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor Barbara?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Myself, motion carries unanimously. G, section post-construction. G one. Prior to the application for the certificate of occupancy, construction must be fully completed. G two, this special permit shall apply to all successors in control of. Or successors in interest of the property described in the special permit application. And accompanying plans. Amy, what's the repeat in brackets? On G two. Is that just a note that it's in another section?
Sorry.
Yep. Uh, G three, within forty-five days of the. Issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the owner shall submit the following. A, one hard copy set. Of the as-built plans. The as-built plans shall contain the following at a minimum. Location of all buildings, driveways, parking areas, utilities, stormwater basins, site lights, plantings. And all other visible and subsurface elements installed and constructed as part of the project. Two. All wetland resource area boundaries. With associated buffer zones and regulatory setback areas. Three, site topography. Four, wetland resource line delineating the limit of work. Work includes any filling, excavating and or disturbance of soils or vegetation approved as part. Of this special permit. Five, wetland resource replication areas constructed as depicted on the site plan. B, an electronic copy of the as-built plans and. See a compliance report. And detailed narrative prepared by the professional engineer certifying compliance. With the requirements of the special permit and any deviations that exist. And their potential effects on the project. D, stormwater calculations based on the as-built plans demonstrating consistency with your approved stormwater calculations. G four. In perpetuity, the applicant shall perform annual maintenance to the project's stormwater management system. Consistent with the approved operations and maintenance plan. The applicant shall submit annual operations and maintenance reports to the town of Lakeville. G five, in the event that project impacts increased due to the selection of a tenant. And the project requires off-site mitigation. All off-site mitigation measures will be constructed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. As-built plans of those off-site improvements will be required to be submitted to the town of Lakeville. That that concludes post-construction conditions. So I move to issue.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I was having trouble with mute and not mute.
Yep.
So um the uh G two, I put repeat because um when I first looked at this, it was um very similar to A five. I decided to leave it in because it does have a um it does have a little bit of a difference because it um references the application and the plans.
Okay. So no changes?
No, sorry.
Thank you. So I move to issue conditions. G one through. G five as drafted.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor Barbara?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Myself vote I, motion carries unanimously. So. In conclusion, in consideration of all of the foregoing. Including the plans, documents, and testimony given during the public hearing. The board hereby grants the applicant a special permit and site plan approval. For the development described above. So. That is the motion on. I put forward that the board vote to approve this decision. Let me get a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Barbara?
Um, are we gonna have a chance to say some other things towards the end of the meeting? Or are we gonna? This is.
If you if you would like to have discussion, probably now is a good time.
Okay, um, well, before I place my vote, I would like to make a couple of comments for the for the public.
Go ahead.
This was a very difficult decision. You know, I've lived here for 21 years. I raised my family here. I live in the north side of town. And this has just been a very heart-wrenching decision. I also served on the first master plan in the early 2000s and care very deeply about the use of that, of that hospital site. I'm very troubled by the environmental issue that exists over there. It's existed for almost 30 years. And many of the people I've spoken to feel that there should be some repercussion to the state. And I just want them to recognize that the state probably transferred that property long before it was in its current state and may not currently hold any liability as we may perceive it in the public. I'm very concerned on the environmental issue, the risk to our first responders and even to children, because I asked my own kids, have you been inside that building? And they said no, but many of their friends have been. So it is definitely a safety issue. There has been a lack of development options on this property. When the Cisco vote came around, I was one of the people that was in opposition to the Cisco vote. And it was a painful process to go through. Cisco was asking for things this developer is not. And in the time since the Cisco vote took place, which was 11 years ago or 10 and a half years ago, there has been no other proposals coming before the town for how to resolve this, this blighted property. So on the one hand, you know, we would love to see retail. We would love to see, you know, something else happening there. But the reality is that market's not bringing that up. And as far as retail, I mean, if anybody wants to look at what's happening at the Silver City Galleria, the reality is retail's changing dramatically. And every time I go to my front door and get an Amazon package, I feel guilty about this. But the reality is we're voting for these decisions with our wallets. So it's something to think about for all of us. In SIS, when we voted down Cisco, we lost almost 11 years of tax revenue. So it wasn't just the increased flight with the hospital site continuing to degrade and remain unsecure, but also the fact that we lost revenue for that period of time. The community is desperate need of a new fire station. And if we had 11 years of revenue, that likely would have been something we could have taken care of. Alternative developments have, we've considered would create more of an impact on the community and more impact on the abutters, both from noise. I think if we had different things come in here, it would most likely be high density rental and that that impact would be very detrimental to the community, have more traffic, less control and on and on, and also be a further drain on our tax revenue sources. I would encourage people to get involved. I know a lot of people are very emotional about this. I've spent many, many hours talking with people and reading through all of the letters. And I just want people to know, you need to show up to these meetings. You need to go watch what's happening on Lake Cam and get involved, run for office. And I guess that's, that's the last thing I want to say. So thank you for listening.
Michelle or Jack, would you like to say anything?
I do have some. Yes, I do have something, Mark. Um, you know, I compare this proposed development to where I currently work. I used to deal with the commute back and forth from Runtham, but now I work in town. I work at a lumberyard, which does wholesale and distribution, very similar to the proposed use at the hospital site. It is located off of Route 18, not in an industrial park, close to Route 495 and also about a residential neighborhood. I feel lucky to work in town, and I think this would be a great opportunity for more people to be able to find employment in town. It addresses the environmental issues, beautifies the landscape, and will bring more traffic to small local businesses in town. I also want to say I'm very grateful to have had this opportunity to be part of this process as 40, the project coordinator. I really want to say thank you to Mark for everything you have done as chairman of the planning board. It's been a lengthy process, and I would like to formally recognize how much time and energy you dedicate to the Town of Lakeville. Thank you for your patience and willingness to listen to the concerns of our residents, even as this continued hearing has proceeded late into the night multiple times. To everyone working on this project behind the scenes, Rich LaCamera, Nate Darling, Amy Questle, Scott Turner, thank you for your support and guidance. I'd also like to thank Chief O'Brien, Jesse Berry, my fellow planning board members, and all the other boards, committees, commissions who have dedicated time to this process and everyone who has played a part along the way. Brittany Gesner, it's been a pleasure to see a bright young woman such as yourself heading a project of this magnitude. Tyler Murphy, thank you for showing our community that Rhino Capital is striving to be a good neighbor. Your countless hours dedicated, dedicated to listening and addressing the concerns of our residents has not gone unnoticed. I think you have had the misfortune of seeing some of the ugly underbelly of our town. But I would like you to understand that this is a town filled with good people who care about our small, tight-knit community and only want to see what's best for our town. To our residents, I'd like to say that your planning board has been diligent in working to ensure your concerns, which are also our concerns, are properly addressed to the best of our abilities. This has been a collaborative effort, and I'm grateful to have been a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Jack, would you like to say anything? Muted, buddy.
Yes, I'm new to the town. I've only been here just a year. And I, you know, I want to echo the sentiments of all the other fellow members who are very hardworking people. I gotta, I gotta hand it to you guys. You guys have worked. You dedicated, hardworking people. Mark, you're, you're one of a kind. You really are. You're a hardworking guy, committed to this town, and the residents of this town should be thankful for the people like you. They've been on these committees way more longer than I have. I, I echo the sentiments of Peter at the beginning of the meeting. Rhino has done, I think, a fabulous job. I think they have brought, you know, the consultancy, engineering people, and they've really agreed to virtually every request that we have made. Tyler has done a wonderful job representing Rhino. So I, I'm in full favor of this project.
Thank you, Jack.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, right now, the, the meeting is closed to public comment, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to thank you. I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, I, I guess I choose not to say too much. It has been an arduous process. I appreciate everybody's kind words that have said nice things. I have been a Lakeville resident for almost 50 years. I care a lot about the town. When I first saw this, I said, no way, not in my town. But I remained impartial, which is part of the process of being a special permit granting authority. And it was difficult. But I looked at, when I asked everybody tonight to say what their big problem was with the project, most everybody said the traffic. And I get that. And it is going to be more traffic because it's something instead of nothing. Uh, but one of the proposed uses that was actually accepted by the town was the national development target, and let's think a stop and shop and a restaurant and some other buildings. If we had accepted that, yeah, people were in favor, but that's 10,000 trips of vehicles in a day. We would have become a rainham or Route 44 at the end of, I'm sorry, 140 by Home Depot. Those things were a real mess, and I honestly don't think that 700 trips in a day is going to come even close to that. I really feel like we did give our best efforts to to do good by the town. I know not everybody's going to like the decision, and I accept that. But I do think that I did the best for the town. So at this point, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, vote aye. Motion for the decision carries unanimously. That concludes tonight's business. Amy, have we satisfied all the needs of the decision documents?
Yes, you have. Mr. Chairman, you do need to close the meeting if you're done with everything.
So, so at this time, I make a motion to close the public hearing and adjourn.
Second.
Eve on Lindsay.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meetings adjourned. Thank you.